And thank you, thank you for the hearing. If it's not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours in advance of the meeting, I've got two. One is that David Moskin arranged the meeting with Michael Burkhardt. We're in attendance with both of them. Really good meeting. As what's Burkhardt suggested, if two boards get together next week, that with one topic, houses is working out. And if there's any ask for comments from the board and along with dates that you typically, they are looking to meet at the Hobbie Center. I think they want to meet between 10 and 12. Can you?
Uh, yes, I can make that.
I want to give Mr. Burkhardt his main option. Does he have to make them all?
Yes.
Okay. David?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, but I do have a question. Who on the Board of Commissioners met with Mr. Burkhardt?
I met with him and David.
But the rest of the board was not notified and it was not a formal board action?
Correct.
I find that very odd.
Well, the formal action was taking place right now.
But, but it's, it's after David Moskin reached out without board authority, without a vote.
He reached out without the board voting.
He reached out without board authority or board knowledge and then he and you met with Burkhardt and with the idea of, or what's come to pass is forming, having a meeting between the two boards. But with, no, no, I had no knowledge of it. Mr. Witt, you have no knowledge of it?
All right. Then we will connect Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday between 10 and 12 at the Center Center.
Uh, I cannot meet on Monday or Tuesday because of the spring state conference for housing authorities.
Excuse me.
Give me a time, Dave. Yeah, so we were down to three days. Let's see, good thing, right? We are okay. So Pamela, just so you know, that was David Moskin arranged the meeting with Michael Burkhardt at Amherst.
Michael Burkhardt?
Michael Burkhardt. And we had a great meeting. Michael Burkhardt suggested discussing the commissioners from Amherst. They get together with one topic. So you just have three days. Although you don't need to vote if you are the.
So I'm at the conference as well.
You are not to be opposed.
I, Michael Burkhardt, they actually brought this up at the Amherst Board meeting and they do want me to.
Then, then he will tell me.
And he said he did tell you that and I had a doubt that was in my head. Um, but I have, there was a board member from Amherst that is also going to the conference. So, and so it does have to follow.
So are we going to contact him with the three dates? If you, we could take one of those.
It does have to comport with open meeting.
That's nice.
All right, that's what we do.
I'm sorry, is this the conference that you suggested new commissioners go to in Westboro or?
Yeah, not in Lockton, it's in Lockton.
That's something. Well, I'm interested in that.
Well, it's actually, it's, uh, I think we can still sign you up. I'm pretty sure.
You would all sign me up and I said, yes, I'm interested, but I don't remember whatever happened. That's on me, I guess.
It starts on Sunday.
Sunday?
This Sunday, April 6th.
I can talk you up immediately.
Okay, thank you.
They would love to have you.
I eat a lot, careful.
I have a question or a chance to laugh to go.
We won't.
Anything we stop on?
Well, there's a problem here. You're passing that through the board's house. Don't you give them.
The one with Michael Burkhardt?
Yes.
Yes.
It will be a public meeting.
Okay, so you want to know when you can meet.
It'll be posted.
It'll be posted?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
It has to be posted.
Yep, thank you.
And by the way, it will be at the.
Oh, I can't because it was. We're having a hard time understanding him.
I can't hear you.
How's that?
That's better because like I said, it's kind of muffled with your.
Okay, I'm sorry, I have, um, I wear the mask not because I'm a particular, but I have an immune issue and, and so it's to pick me. Okay. I cover you for me maybe. Uh, so where are we?
Notifying the tenants.
It'll be a public, it'll be posted in the town, the county.
In the town, not here?
The town calendar online.
Okay.
And as opposed to do we post it in the same county?
Can't measure out here too.
Yeah, do, okay. So wherever open meetings are posted, we'll post it there.
Okay.
The second thing not on the agenda that happened before the other appointment was that Harry and I met with Hugh Chairman of the Petfield as an authority and we had another great meeting. That guy brought along a tenant handbook that I thought wanted to pass around. And also they had failed hazard authority emergency planning procedures and I felt I was going to pass it now. And it was terribly put together by their part-time executive director and looks pretty good to me. But it was pathetic to me. Um, now we'll go to the regular. Oh yeah, but it's not previously printed. I mean, that's not a big.
Just the last meeting, right Pam?
Yes.
Yeah, so if we could just take that, we do complete.
Okay. There you go.
Please.
Those were February 28th minutes?
Yes.
May I have a first class and CBA survey? Dr. Billy Seppan? Luke Hamlet? Right, there's none, it's all good. Next discussion, discussion regarding independent financial audit.
If you ask the attorney or the firm.
Harry's got a call on?
He does.
Okay, so let me turn order of talking about the independent financial audit.
Yes, I'll talk about that, Mr. Chairman. At one of the previous meetings, I had asked when the audits were done and I was told that we had audits done. Uh, what I did not know is that one of the audits is called an AUP audit, agreed upon procedures. I guess that's through the DHCD. But no financial audit has been done other than it was commented that Gary De Pace does our financial audit. Um, I find that to be a challenge since Gary De Pace is our fee accountant and auditing is always work. Uh, would be an inherent conflict in my opinion. So I would move that we would have a four-year independent financial audit of the housing, housing records and books minutes and.
Give a second.
I'm sure.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, can I just, so AUP does have a financial component of it?
He does.
The AUP audit with the best productive history, does have a financial department. Also, he did go through, he did go through checks and balances and it's a seamless. So it's a different type of audit than what Harry used to.
But we're talking about mission open made secondary. And you just made a new financial audit.
But now we have a discussion.
We're going to secondary.
Right, so I'm, so that's what I'm offering is that that's how it's done. So then how are we going to? Because it's my understanding too that Michael Geiger was reached out to.
He's the director.
He's an, uh, he does financial audits at the level that he is moving and that you talk to.
Do you want to talk to him? Yes, I do.
So in the estimate is $16,000 to $20,000 per year that we want. So there is the housing authority that can get that money.
And you can look at this.
The only thing I would react to with housing authority will get that money is when you approve for budget, we were told by Gary De Pace that we could move items, line-by-line items and find some alternative alternatives. So we'll have to look at our budget and see how we're going to pay for it. It's going to come out of our budget.
We don't have the funds to, we don't have $20,000 a year.
Well, I don't know if that's exactly.
It's, it's a pretty good guess.
Frankly, I don't think we're going to use that for that.
But even Lisa, Valerie was here yesterday saying that she's the one who has $20,000. If there's not enough, you can continue away from services and capital for the housing authority.
Well, I've made the motion and we'll see how we can get that.
I have a question. And no one here will know the answer to why I'm asking Pamela. So Pamela, is this a typical thing? Has it ever been done with other houses? You know, the executive directors for every housing authority in the state, but you know.
DHCD rules, regulations, policy.
Independent auditing after all of the auditing that DHC.
He does.
In addition to fee accounts, in addition to the audits conducted, like Gary De Pace is our fee accountant. He doesn't do audits on us. He has checks and balances. We have a completely different auditor without. To me, it's unheard of and a gross abuse of funds. The funds would have to come from happily housing authority's money. If other housing authorities are, are not subjected to this by their board, then why would we take money away from services for our tenants and take them away from capital programming for our tenants in order to satisfy the curiosity of a board? So there is, like she can answer my question.
Can you have the pause?
So it's, um, it's not normal thing unless there's, unless there is, um, so typically Lisa Valerie found something in the audit that raised a question, then we go under the law. That it would come to a point, this is, the happy housing authority follows all the movements of the UCD with both the AUP and the PMR this year. In our, I'm so sorry, at our level of housing authority, the size of the housing authority and the funding that we get, we are giving exactly what we're supposed to be doing.
Second, I've been told recently by the chairman of a very respectful hazard board, that these would be the purpose of this. So there, a week ago, I may have been on the fence, now I would say they're doing this.
Thank you, Matt Stone, we can't understand you.
How's that?
Well, let's see if we can hear you now.
Yes.
I do have a response to your statement about having contacted another executive director of another housing authority. Would you care?
No, I, I didn't say executive director, I mean chairman.
A chairman of another housing authority, would you then state for the record who that is instead of keeping it secret from the public?
I think that, yes.
Well, automatically Reese was saying that it's going to take money away from tenants. You don't have any idea when they're rearranging money, if they have to pay for an audit, that this is taking things away from tenants. We have no idea. Number two, I wanted to let you know that I think it's important that.
I'm probably going to.
I just, I think that it's important for tenants to also look into things like COVID money, like, and things like laundry money that is being used properly, not just the money of the everyday operation. I think what we need to do is to not buy anything junk.
Thank you. This is an introduction for the board members.
Well, that's confident, to make sure to have your own.
No, please, please, it's before the board. Okay, that's perfect. The motion was made seconded to have a, how many years?
Four years.
Four years.
Subject to the board. Subject to the board.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, subject to the board?
In other words, yes. Question me if I'm wrong. It's yes in theory, but depending on the cost of financial, financial arrangement.
Sure, I'll take that as a further amendment.
Okay, so a motion has been made, seconded and amended to have a independent financial audit subject to our approval of a cost estimate.
Yes.
Okay. All in favor, signify percent. There's very few.
Can I just ask, please, inside, please, who's getting involved? The board's going to deal with that?
No.
Yes.
So any further discussion? There is none on call for the, all in favor, signify, they're saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, so it's, uh, the motion carries. The next, I don't think that the agenda is, um, uh, discussion regarding an independent attorney for the board. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, can I just make clarification on that? Is that only attorney for the board members or are you, are you attorney for that?
It's board members. Is there a motion on? Put it on the table.
Sure, I'll make the motion that the Valley Housing Authority Board seeks its own independent attorney. Or anything that we will come before us as a representation of.
For example, it would be the, um, retraction of the agreement.
Sure.
Just the first one.
And then the other legal matters that we will do.
Is there a second? There's no second.
What's that?
There's a second. And leave the specimen.
So, so if I can just offer that the housing authority does participate in these recent open and target values is that you get to prove there is a list of attorneys and there are other attorneys other than the one that we're currently using. And DHCD qualifies and vets them based on the type of issue that you may be having. For instance, the housing authority uses Sullivan and Kansas, which were important issues for staffing issues. There's no policy. Um, so that's their, the advantage of their grant is that DHCD provides additional funding, uh, $300,000 for, um, the representation. So we send it to them.
Thank you, we'll take that. Business estimation completed, but next meeting you can be here after the presentation.
No, no, you're talking about a motion to, to, you're going to bring to a vote that this board commissioners allocates funding from our happily housing authority funds to pay an attorney to represent us as a board.
That's not the point, right, but.
Well, then would you clarify, because we need to clarify that.
The motion was to, for the board to hire. Let me ask you, for example, the agreement was vanished.
So are we ready for discussion?
We're in the middle of discussion.
All right.
We're not talking about how we're going to fund it yet.
Okay, but you're, you're talking about voting on hiring an attorney without even looking at how you're going to pay for it. Uh, and if you fund it from housing authority monies, again, we're in the same situation that comes from, uh, when you're talking about doing independent financial audits, you're talking about taking money away from the tenant services and taking money away from capital planning projects. You're talking about.
Not talking to you.
I think he can do that. Now.
Just so the entire board is aware, the money to pay for these things has to come from somewhere and it will come away. It will be spent for these things that there's really, it, it's a fun idea, but there is no money within housing authority budgets to take care of these things that you want to do.
All right, Pamela just explained that there is another source of funding if you choose a particular kind of attorney.
That's not what she said. That's not at all what she said, sir.
She's explaining to clarify.
It's the reason why housing authority, we do participate. So we do participate in it. If I just, again, we have very limited funding and there is the budget guidelines, which all been provided atop of and if we don't have it, it can get with you again. But there aren't budget guidelines and one can move things around. Um, it does have to be within reason too. So if you, for, and for, you're specifically saying the management agreement, we could absolutely provide you with a copy that could just finish of the list of the different attorneys that you can look at and then you can use that unenforced. Um, what do you need to do for that? For that?
Okay, so if the motion will pass, at, by our next meeting, we could look at some of those details and come up with a, uh, a proposal for the board to vote on, visa-fee funding for.
Maybe perhaps you do what you just did with the, the previous motion where you say, when we hear the votes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, is that clear, everybody?
Yeah, a question on budget. What's in the administrative order on the budget?
So Carrie, um, I'm.
Send that one in, please.
Um, it's, it's kind of, it's your management fees, it's your telephone, internet expenses. Um, that's where your management and everything lies. Um, our salary would be, everything.
Who's salary?
Make, make them, so make it so, make it so that we can, we can speak. Then our salaries are management.
Okay, there's motion on the table. Any further discussion? We're in, now, of course, for both, all in favor of the motion to have a independent legal advisor to be presented at the next meeting? Please signify, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion carried.
I'm going to start.
No.
The next item is the discussion regarding the chair's email to the board about, um, Carrie and Comerford's staff comments. I emailed the board member. I told the board that the time that the staff of the legislative delegation keeps track of the complaints or comments that they receive by phone and, uh, and, and gave a list of those to me, which I forwarded on to the board members. Um, and, um, among the items was, um, to a clarification of the role of the individual heavenly housing authority visa-fee, uh, the agreement with Amherst. And it's clear and they have worked with the DHCD and gotten a written, um, description of what that, um, authority is. And I will, when I have a chance, I will forward the DHCD's comments to all the board members. The basic point is that we have, we, the heavenly housing authority, has the authority with whom we have to direct, oversee the executive director of the Amherst housing authority. And I will forward that to you and we can discuss it further at the next meeting. Fair enough. Any further discussion on that? Now, there, in that email, um, Pamela, I'm sure I forwarded a copy of that, a list to you, didn't I?
The one that you just emailed?
Yeah.
This week.
Okay. Um, we have policies to deal with most of those things. True, right?
You do. Well, not most, not all of those things. The majority of them fall, either under policy, under the lease or under the regulations.
Okay, could you, for the next meeting, uh, you haven't done it for this meeting?
Uh, not all of them.
Okay, for the next meeting, could you make it for this, that correlates their list with things for which we have policies?
Sure.
And for, and this for which we need. Is that fine?
Sure.
Would the board agree to that? So we, okay, so that was a great. Okay, discussion regarding duties of the board members and the executive director. Um, the, um, training manual that everybody should apply to.
They, they still hate it. Was there a microphone?
No, it's, the microphone feeds the camera. You can put it on YouTube. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I'll try to be more careful. Now, there's, it needs to be clarification of the duties of the executive director and the duties of the board members. And the list is contained in the required training of the executive board members, or, sorry, the commissioners of the housing authority. And for example, on page, they're about page 42, 43, 44. And, um, I don't think we have time today to deal with those, but at a future meeting, we should run through that list to make sure everybody understands what their lane is. The DHCD has found that where there is dysfunction between, uh, in a housing authority, it's often because the lines have, responsibility have been crossed. In other words, people have stepped out of their lane and gotten involved in things that they shouldn't have gotten involved in. So I think it would be, I think it would be useful to go through that list together. Does the board agree? Yes. Lisa?
Yeah.
David?
Yes.
All right, so should we put that on the agenda for next meeting?
Chairman, I'm sorry, you could identify the areas where there might be a blurring of responsibilities so we don't waste time on, on the areas that. An areas where the bridge now come.
Pardon?
What you're saying that is powerful to understand.
Is it the language or the, or the volume of my voice?
Move yourself, Sam, there's a little voice.
Okay, well, I've got a solution for you. In a couple of meetings, you'll have a new chairman. And you could, you could, you could lobby for a chairman with a clearer voice. All right. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The board sat up there and we were out there.
Come on, lady.
Yeah, okay.
You got me by the thing.
Okay, so.
I can see we're all like this and we're trying to.
You're welcome. You're welcome to sit there. I don't mind.
Um. Yeah, yeah, I got my hearing. And you got a bad, you got a bad system here.
Yeah, here anyway, the number.
Bad system, part of concerns.
I suggest everybody raises their voice, um, and then with the housing authority, we'll certainly, it's a kind of secret. But I do think it's just part of the population that is, that he, they do get. So we'll look into it for the next week, okay?
A, a sample for her?
For the, for the, yeah, so if, folks, if we can just, um, so I'm just offering, if everyone please, no other talking, because it does make it hard. The housing authority will certainly will get microphones and a speaker for next time. And then in the meantime, the board and myself and anyone else speaking will speak at a higher, higher bar. Thank you.
That's great. Let's see if we can't solve that problem together, okay? Did, did you all hear me and understand? Did you all understand? Did you hear?
I read lips.
You read lips, okay.
I grenade left ear.
Tracy, right? Okay, did you understand?
I didn't understand, I can read lips, but at least folks can't read lips.
All right, um. Okay, uh, one of the re, one of the areas where there was crossover recently, and this may be addressing some of which are absolutely, David, is, uh, a board member went out and apparently conducted a survey without authorization of the whole board. And that's the type of thing that, um, it is not really appropriate. Um, I'll, I'll let it go at that.
Uh, no. If you are going to say a board member went out and did an unauthorized survey, you can't just leave it at that. It requires a response, because that is pretty much slanderous, since that's not true. So you have a tenant representative on the board. They are first and foremost a tenant. Any tenant here can conduct a survey of their neighbors, which is what I did.
Oh, you, you, you did it.
I even presented it. Excuse me, if the chair is not going to maintain order, I will ask for the public to please be silent, so the rest of the public can hear what's being said. So, I conducted a survey of my neighbors. I conducted it as a tenant, and I even presented it during a board of commissioner meeting in the public comment session. So I would appreciate if you're going to make false allegations that you apologize right now for making a false allegation about me.
That's right.
I didn't make any allegation.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
You know you did, John.
Well, listen, if apologizing, my apologizing can be, will placate you, then I'll apologize.
Any tenant here can conduct a survey. I know some tenants who have in the past.
It's a big joke, John, you got caught in your own setup. What? We think everything is a big joke here, you're lucky.
Okay.
That's exactly it.
I would like for you to acknowledge to the tenants present that they can at any time conduct a survey, a petition, or anything they want. They can ask their neighbors what their neighbor's opinions are. You have that right, every one of you do. The board can hear it or no, but I delivered it during the public comment session, and any tenant here can do the same.
Okay, moving on.
The chairman, I'd like to just say one thing.
Please.
I would appreciate a fellow commissioner not raising their voice and talking with proper, proper delivery of the message. And just raising the voice and all of that, I, I, that's not a problem.
Uh, may I respond, Chair?
Yes, I'd like to.
Every tenant here.
You yell it again.
Every ten, yes.
We can't hear everybody who's asked to raise their voice.
And that's why I, I'm like.
Carrie, just open your mind and listen.
Thank you.
Every tenant here is having some problems understanding the commissioners. I speak with a raised voice, because I understand that many of my neighbors cannot hear what is being said. But I'll bet every single person here can hear when I speak.
That's right.
Okay, that's true. The next order of business is to discuss.
An apology?
No, not really.
The next order of business is to discuss the Choosick letter, and this is at the specific request of Risa.
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Penelope.
Please.
Can we table that for the next meeting?
If, if the boards willing, David, let's, I'll, oh, do. Would the board like to table that?
I think we ought to discuss it right now and get done with, because I don't know when, frankly, why we're even receiving. Um, we're not party to any of this, I don't even know why we were presented this at the last meeting. And I've gone through it, and I've got questions, and so I don't know why we had to table it. So it's on the agenda.
That's fine.
Is it?
We're not a tenant.
So the suggestion was to table it, I don't hear a motion to, to take, to table it. Is there a motion to table? Or should we discuss it?
I mean, ask the director why she'd like to table.
Because it's, it's ongoing. So it's, it's an unfinished, it's unfinished business. There's another meeting on Friday at the Valtertown Housing Authority, and I'd like to hold it until then.
I certainly have no objection.
May I just ask why you were even presented with this?
So this Choosick sent it to both boards, because we share an executive director. The allegations were against me as the executive director, and the topic was brought up in a Hadley Housing Authority board meeting and at the Hadley Select Board meeting.
Okay, you, you brought.
I didn't bring it up.
You passed it out.
No.
No, 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 a tenant brought up, brought it up during public comments.
Who, who was the tenant?
Uh, I'm not gonna say, it, it's part of the record, uh, AR minutes.
Tell me who the tenant.
I, we're not supposed to discuss it. So it's, it came up in this published, in this body, this body of meeting.
Okay.
Who had the paper the same day the tenant spoke about?
It's not public comment, why even allow it?
It's a bargaining situation, but why you were even presented with it?
Right, because there was, the letter explains that there was an executive session to go over the allegations against the executive director in the housing authority.
But why was that?
Because she had an executive director. She thought that it was the right thing to do to advise you.
I asked her to come and explain it, and she didn't.
She, I, she, you guys, you folks, moved.
I emailed her.
Yes, and she explained that, because it, we, we do share an executive director.
She never explained it to me.
So it's, in the letter, it clears the housing authority of any wrongdoing.
You, you, you would like to table it to the next meeting?
But if, if you don't.
And Austin's a grand.
Should we table it or not?
It's a grand.
Table? Table?
Table it.
Table? All right?
All things.
Okay, it's, it's tabled. And it, it goes on to the next meeting?
Please.
All right, um. Okay, yeah, now we're, um, the update on the Wi-Fi?
So I, I believe that your requested, John, on Wi-Fi is the higher level of Wi-Fi, so that for Alex is, but, but. So we are actually out of it right now, and, um, when it's due, Andy?
It's due today at two o'clock.
Oh, perfect, okay, of course. So once the I, um, the I, they'll be coming on very quickly once we get that project, um, that provider. So I would hope by next meeting that we have Wi-Fi.
Okay, can we connect the vendor with Alex to make sure it's, works? Okay.
Yes, according to the proposal, they're starting to view first of May.
Oh, first of May, okay, thank you. Well, we will, we will work with, um, Alex in Padley medium.
Okay, that's, that sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Question for Bruce, does that also include the Wi-Fi for this community room for the tenants' access?
What, what we're hiring is IT for all three housing authorities, IT support. So anything has to do with, uh, information technology, including Wi-Fi.
So that's good news.
Yeah.
Okay, accounting for and use of laundry money. Does anyone have any comments on it? Pamela, maybe you can explain, huh?
That money's true, but the, what the question, other than to be accounting money, uh, the, the laundry money is also, um, through the budget guidelines from DHCV. It's how we have to, um, how we account for it. Um, half of the funds go to the utility bill, um, and then Kerry printed off, and if you want to just take one and pass it down. This is an accounting of what's transpired and why does, what the current balance is as the housing authority just purchased, um, brand new equipment with the chain line story? Or is that a month six? Oh, okay, sorry, I ended up with. And then each month, month that goes on the treasurer's report, which is, is, um, submitted by Kerry Lee.
It's all the same thing.
Oh, okay.
Just three was stuck together.
All right, so the current balance is what?
Well, I, uh, Kerry, you paste this report, it, it is, um, negative three hundred and fifty dollars. Because again, we're still paying off that laundry.
So.
I'm not sure what the question.
How is it being?
Could you ask them to please?
I don't hear.
You might be a little hard of hearing, but other people are hearing.
You just calm down, you're really irritating me.
Mr. Allen, there are people here as members of the public who continue to say that the folks over here in the members of the public are having side conversations that are disruptive.
Okay. Would you please refer?
There, excuse me, right, or? Down there, there was one that was talking down there, right down there.
All right, no, all right, everybody, everybody, please be quiet, except, except commissioners and, and the executive director. So.
Is that Judy that probably didn't?
You're right, and you're freezing.
All right, so picking up on the, uh, Pamela, please, the, uh, laundry money?
So I, I guess it's just the accounting of it, and I guess that was the question, and I apologize. So is this on, every month you get the treasurer's report?
Yeah.
And, um, Kerry, you case keeps count of it, so it is in a separate account? And that's just, that's the way it's always been done, and I think it was, it was a question as to how we would count. The common is.
They have just, uh, it is not in a separate bank account.
Right, it's, it's a separate line, not a separate account.
Okay, so you're accounting for it separately, but it's not a separate bank account? You're, it, you've got a fund set up?
Uh, an accounting line, not anything.
An accounting fund, okay. All right, does that satisfy?
Budget? Not a budget.
It's, um, listen, they're talking, it's not, it's fine, listen.
Okay, um, is that enough on the, uh, laundry money for the time being? Thank you. Okay, the warrant reports?
You still with, as a trailer. Kerry?
I defer to Kerry.
So warrant reports are where?
It is in the.
Okay, is there anything significant?
Uh, I could comment, Mr. Chairman, since Risa and I are now meeting with Kerry to go over the bills to be paid and reinitial them. Uh, I did have a question on, uh, one of the invoices. Happened to come from the attorneys, but we seem to have resolved that, I believe. There was a difference in our hourly rate, and everyone initialed that. And when I got to see it, I found that the, uh, there were two different hourly rates for the attorney, two seventy-five an hour and one sixty-five. But I think that has been resolved.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I didn't see anything else, I don't know if, uh, Risa or Chair here saw anything else, but I would move the pay warrants as we have approved them, or paid.
Zero second.
I second.
All, uh, any discussion? All, all in favor of specifically saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, one thing I want to clarify is, um, is the executive director still signing checks?
I did sign the last batch, yes.
Going forward?
Uh, once everyone is on the list, or, um, I'm sorry, we do need a board vote. Um, because there's, um, at the last board meeting. Where's that, excuse me, to place office. Kerry, can we come on up?
Are you sure you're parked there, thing?
I.
Kerry, she wanted you to come up.
Um, what Pamela was saying is that we do need a board vote to, um, add the signers to the, if, kind of, sort of, I have the paperwork for Chair, uh, excuse me, for David and Risa. Um, at the last meeting, you said that you were going to be a signer on the account. Since then, you have changed your mind, so we simply need to amend the vote to, you know, you as a.
Okay, and how long would it take them to get to the bank and get that done?
The bank already has the information for Risa and David. I need them to bring the board vote to, so they, and, um, then they'll.
Is that something you do today?
Uh, I would have to meet, I believe.
Tomorrow maybe. All right. Okay, so, uh, is there a motion, please, to remember the original, uh, motion that had all commissioners on it and to just David and Risa? That, oh, Harry.
Rich, David, and Risa.
Right, okay, so is there a motion to amend?
So, so Richie and Pamela are, are already on the bank account. They will be used on the bank account. There's not going to be signers on the bank account. Um, David and Risa need to be.
Why would Pamela stay on the bank account, for what purpose?
I, why, why, on the, um, on the chief financial officer. As the executive director, I mean, the chief managing officer of the housing authority, exactly. My, my position. But she just will no longer sign the checks, Risa needs to.
And Rich?
Um, we're only choosing.
Okay.
Rich could be an alternative.
Do you want to stay?
Maybe I.
Yeah, do you want to stay on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It is always a good idea to have some remaining members on, and they're just signer, just in case something happens with them.
Is there a motion to, to do that? Make three, uh, two, three signers, so Kerry can take the, the bank. All right, who was that? Okay, we need to, we need to discuss. We're now, of course, all in favor, somebody saying aye? Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous? Okay, um. Anything else in the financials? Then we'll move to the property manager report?
I believe we're looking for the treasurer's report now, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay.
I have deferred, uh, to our accountant, Kerry.
Um, I did sit with Risa for some board training, as she requested, um, last week, and I did go over all of the treasurer report and, um, and.
treasury report and, and then expense reports, as he really hasn't been able to pass on understanding what's going on with the expenses. My question was to you, is, is there anything that jumps out at you that?
Any programmers have anything jumping?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would ask you guys if there's anything unusual to be brought to our attention. After the, if there was an unusual expense that wasn't anticipated, or something ended up being much more expensive, or you saved a bunch of money, just please leave our attention, anything that surprised you, you know, wasn't expected, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Mothkin has asked if there was anything that jumped out. About actual two times I sat with Carrie, our accountant, and yes, there was something that jumped out. I found out that Hadley Housing Authority checking account was down to around ten thousand dollars because we had not received our subsidy from DHCD because this board of commissioners had failed to approve warrant reports, quarterly reports, the, the, the accountants' report, the financial statements, et cetera, over the course of months. That triggered Hadley Housing Authority not receiving their subsidy from DHCD, which meant our checking account was very low. There were, may I continue, Mr. Chair?
Continue.
There, there were bills that could not be paid because there wasn't enough money in Hadley Housing Authority's checking account because, best as I could figure, the board of commissioners at Warham had refused to make these approvals. This caused us, well, caused Carrie to have to not pay certain bills. Now, this is unprecedented, Hadley Housing Authority has paid bills upon receipt. Carrie has a history and previous accounting, is a history of paying the bills every two weeks upon receipt. But this particular board of commissioners put us in a very bad way, and I think we need to reflect on that. And going forward, we need to do the business of the housing authority, which is limited to legal, financial fiduciary oversight of the executive director and policy and procedure instead of dabbling in the complaints of a couple of tenants that are best handled by going through the proper channels according to the grievance process, grievance procedure.
What is the amount of the check that we did not receive?
Carrie?
They actually did, by the, send us some seventy-five thousand dollars, I would just say.
March fifteenth?
But we had to request that, didn't we? Because, because the monies, the approvals, the board failed to approve the quarterly reports, financial statements, warrant reports. Our usual subsidy, there had to be a special request for the subsidy. It doesn't make the housing authority staff look bad, it makes this board of commissioners look very dysfunctional.
Okay, but everything is fine now, right?
Well, I was, yeah, I was, and so it is, it is keeping on, unfortunately, but now.
You Pamela? See, that's what David was asking, is there anything unusual?
That's why I spoke up.
Well, but he asked the question of.
This is private.
So David can.
So hazard hasn't been resolved, I'm having a trouble. I had the money that you should have at this point, are you still waiting for money?
So they, they'll advance us fully for our subsidy, they advance us throughout the course of the year. And normally, it would come like every couple of months, and get a change in subsidy, but they did withhold for months. Situation, I was unable, as she said, I paid all the bills I had every two weeks. And I was unable to pay two monthly prices, over twenty thousand dollars, because I had them all.
So right now, you're, everything's back to normal, or?
I would say normal now, but I do have the funds.
You have the funds, okay. So I'm sorry, I don't understand, so why are things not back to normal?
I guess we'll have to wait and see, if I get my deposit in a couple of months, I say, well, we caught up and I've been able to file, because you approved the budget, you approved your board release. So I was able to, I can't file those without your board vote.
So you've got all the what you need now?
Actually, first ends our next quarter, so if you were to promptly approve the board release at your next meeting, hopefully, we'll get back on track.
Well, thank you for taking the time to get all of us on the board up to speed, especially the new people that needed to understand what was going on with the numbers and make sure that they understood what needed to be done. I'd like to just say one word, even thirty seconds or less. Our board training tells us repeatedly that our job is to be skeptical, I think I mentioned this before. So when you're agreeing to volunteer to be a board for the town and the housing authority, you're really just up here somewhere trying to work on policies, policies, I sat with Pamela yesterday, and she explained that policies do come up from operations, and that was good for me to hear, some people think the policymakers don't pay attention enough to what's going on. But in housing authorities, it's up to the operating people to let the commissioners know what kind of policies they need put in a place so the place runs. I'm not mad at anybody for needing to come to an understanding of what was going on with the numbers before they signed off on them. I apologize for the board taking a little extra time and you having to reapproach the housing, the board, DHCD to get the money, but I hope you're a little patient with new people getting up to speed, I think it's, I'm thankful that they want to be careful with the money, okay, sorry, wait, wait over thirty seconds.
Okay, I think that sounds like, to me, it's resolved. Going ahead to the property managers' report, the vacancy report.
Was there an actual vote? I know there's a, Gary's report is just information.
So we're also?
Yes.
We can do that. Vacancy report, them please.
We have been, so we're doing very well filling our vacancies. We did give transfers for reasonable foundation.
Yeah, watch that.
We're so busy. So, and we just, as of this moment now, we have one vacant. And we transferred pregnant to another one, so we're still back at two vacancies. We are in the vetting process at the end. We are at the, we are at the final stages of filling the one at the Berke Way, and we are still in construction on the, so we're doing well with our vacancy report.
Thank you for your report, and I appreciate your sense of humor. I really do.
Yeah, well.
There you go. The tenants' account receivable report.
So looking at this, we have thirteen residents that are paying as full at the six, six, seven buildings. Six residents for between one month, and three residents are in housing starts for five. Factors other than low rent. Going to four or in total late rent, we, basically, are effectively late to agreements. And also, the process also, there are other these violations in addition to the being provisioned. So, which works out, and we had, and we have three tenants that are on repayment agreements that are working there. So they're, they're not yet, and they're working on. And then at the seven oh five developments, we did have one thing that they go into the fourth, and she does pay out the rent, so, and you'll see that. We are just far to, and that is the board paid out the rent, and we do have.
Is that what I like to give? Anything else? Any questions from the board? Okay, the window replacement project.
And we're very excited about this, your window project is mine hand.
Right, right, and so the housing authority receives roughly around seventy thousand a year for formula funding, so it's taken a few years to come up with hundred ninety-two thousand to do the window project. It's been a process, but we went to bid on the window project, it was very close between the first and second place. The second place, base bid actually won the project because we're including alternate one, which is replacing the wood out in front of the windows, so that it doesn't rot out with the material that, that will last. So that's what the alternate one is, when you look at the bids, you'll see, sometimes the second one is winning the bid instead of the first one. And that's because we had funding supplemented to this project from CPA, which is the Community Preservation Act in Hadley. The CPA supplemented it and allowed us to do the alternate as well, which is great, because that's why we don't have to work on those, you know, that wood falling out right after we get your window, we start replacing wood. So what we will need for that project is, we come recommended from Bradley Architects, the architect that has vetted the instruction, diversified construction services, so what we would need is a board vote approving the award to diversified construction services for the window.
Is there such a motion?
I move we accept the. Say the word.
Recommendation?
Yes, of Bradley Architects' recommendation for diversified construction services.
Second?
Just ask for an amendment to include the dollar amount.
Oh, yes. Yeah, including the amount one hundred and ninety-two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars be accepted.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept the amended motion?
Make a motion.
The motion been made, it's a second to, and a second, this is to the amended motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Please vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I said aye.
Aye, okay, that's unanimous, good, thank you very much. Work order report.
So the work order report, what I do is, just so you see a real idea what's going on in the last two months of the work orders. I just provided as information the folks required, I'll answer any questions about it. Just a vision, will you? No, work's being done around there.
Good, thank you. I don't think we need to approve that, we just accept it, right?
Under this category.
Yes, please. Mr. Mothkin?
I sat with Pamela yesterday, probably most of an hour, I'm sorry Pamela, interruption, I was just picking up my package. And we talked about issues, and one of the number one issues for me has been things safe here. Is this really a secure environment for the tenants? And we talked about cameras, and what kind of issues there might have been over the years that would justify the expense of cameras, and I understand that nobody likes to be on camera, and places that have too many cameras are kind of intimidating. And I guess I'm putting it up for discussion, especially for Bruce and Pamela and all of you. How would you feel about board cameras? Now, I don't want to get involved with operations here, but I'm making the suggestion that the administration and the tenants consider more of these little wifi cameras, they're very cheap. They get hooked up to a computer, and the computer records, you know, let's say, so each night, whatever activity the cameras are seeing, and if there's been no trouble, you delete, you know, that night or that week or whatever. So I understand you have cameras up here.
But they got taken out by the American Civil Liberties, she took them back in, so we got removed by the American Civil Liberties, she took them back in.
Okay, so again, I don't want, I tend to talk. Okay, so I don't know how the CLU works. But if you, the tenants say, yeah, we would like that, we would feel better, there are people walking around at night that we don't know. I think some of us have worked with Bill Newman before at the CLU, my daughter worked for the LCLU, she's an attorney. I would guess that if the tenants say, we, we okay, you know, we're okay with this, no? Anyway, I'm sorry, so soon, I just, I'm.
Justice Chair, please.
What I want to say is, I'm not in here, but the safety here, everybody kind of checks on everywhere, and because now there's a fast behind our we don't have the rail trail coming in, so I sometimes leave my back door and the front door open. There has never been a problem, we all be each other.
Okay.
Everybody, at least the ones that I know, we feel pretty safe here.
Right, Tracy, if you, if you speak for the population, then I should just shut up, I guess.
Well, no, because.
If something did happen.
Let me suggest something, rather than have the discussion here, would you be willing to meet with some tenants to discuss the issue?
Well, yeah, why don't you just, Tracy, maybe you could just ask.
Honestly, that falls under the daily operations of Amherst Housing. I mean, honestly, please, Chandler, it seems like you three keep voting, and you always, you just look like you're staring at the stars. What we need is people together, because this, again, is our problem. And you are addressing two or three people, and you think that's for the majority, and it truly is not. This is a great community, and I can tell you, there's a number of people in here who have no problem coming asking me to change a tire, to fix their bicycle tire, to make sure that their parents have food at night and are eating dinner. There's a lot of things that we do, we feel safe, because you know, I, I walk around sometimes at night, I've had twenty surgeries, and I've got to move.
Good, thank you.
Otherwise, I feel, so, yes, we feel safe.
Mr. Chair.
We do.
Alright.
He's aiming towards something better.
Okay, I'm not going to disagree with you, I'm really happy to hear everything.
This, this is a beautiful place.
Tracy, what I'm thinking is, cameras are one of those things where you don't need them until you need them. So if something did happen here, I don't want to go into the cameras, if everybody's agreement.
Everybody, they have speed dial, nine one one speed dial, they're always here almost every.
More information.
Okay, we can talk more about.
Yes, are you okay, Tracy?
Oh, I'm fine, yeah.
Okay.
I just love you to do your jobs, pay the bills, make sure everything is running fine, and let the day-to-day operations be hung up between Amherst Housing and the day-to-day operations. I don't know anybody who has been here who can't go to somebody and ask, hey, look, this is broken, fix it.
Wait a minute, go ahead, Visha.
Okay, so this, this, I think Tracy is exactly right, this is more. Okay, so this, this, I think Tracy is exactly right. This is more of a day-to-day operations decision, which, uh, our managing agent has been very good about having tenant chats. And then the tenants come together with the, with our executive director and we come up with a solution. But whether or not to have more video cams or have more or less is not within the purview of the Board of Commissioners. It's a day-to-day operations thing.
With you. There's no debate about that. I just bring it up as a thought because.
But this is a, this is a tenant chat issue with the executive director.
It was fine.
Okay. Yes, please. Uh, wait, please. Just wait a minute.
No, it's a bird. Tracy got to talk. I want to get. Please, folks. So if this is day-to-day, it would be as it is.
That clock is an hour behind.
It is day-to-day. Um, it is, but it can be put into a policy. And with all due respect, I, I absolutely understand where the tenants are coming from. We need to have a better conversation about this and our thoughts for it. But when Mr. Lochkin and I were speaking yesterday, we were talking about different types of policies and I brought up security cameras. So Mr. Lochkin is just going, parlaying on a conversation. So please don't attack the necessary. We will, if you agree that it should just go into tenant chat and then really feel that you have a policy to want that.
So it'll come to us if, if appropriate.
Yes, that's right. Yeah, probably policy and funding.
Yep.
Just wanted to say one thing. It's very important that you know, I'm just saying, you know, because we've got pushed aside when I said it a minute ago, that our cameras in this particular room, not the whole community center, got taken out by the American Civil Liberties. And they got taken over by Amherst and came back. Yeah, that's one of the things you have to understand. And, and we have found, this is all hearsay, that the camera film has been tampered with when people have gone to work. Whether, whether.
Okay.
So what's the use of having cameras that people are going to be tampering with the film?
That's in that line of.
Okay.
So you're making it when you're bringing these things up, you have to know the history of what we need to deal with.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so clearly this is an issue not to be discussed so much in this board meeting, okay? You guys need to sit down, talk it out, sit around the table, get it worked out.
By following ground.
Yep.
There you go.
There you go.
Let me just explain one thing, Tracy. I'm sorry if I, if it sounds like I'm trying to tell the administration what to do. When I was asked to run and I got appointed to governor's office, the first thing I thought was, all right, housing story, I don't know anything about housing stories. What should my first concern be? My first concern should be that the place is safe. So that's why this came up.
Okay, so you need to sit down and talk to Tracy and come to a common agreement.
No, this is, this is something for the, not between any individual board member and tenants. That's overstep. It needs to stay between the tenants. There, we have a vehicle for it called tenant chats. We have the, the, um, administration, the executive director, the staff have meetings with tenants. That's the appropriate vehicle.
Okay, thank you. Um. Okay, thank you very much. Um, rent collection policy. Is that next?
Yep, so the, so the rent collection, uh, at the last meeting, you have formed a subcommittee with, uh, Rita and, um, Richard. And the three of us met and they went through that entire packet that the board was presented with, um, the memo, the outlining of, of the different types of, what's within the policy, with an example of other policies. And they worked on and they figured out the way the policy for, um, submit, there are no real big changes in the rent collection policy compared to the one that the, um, the creatures for Hadley approved in two thousand and six. Um, what's better about this policy, it's more detailed. It, it explains the different nuances of how rent is collected, um, how, the means of how you can pay your rent, how it's applied to your account. There's a lot more information for both, um, the residents and also for the staff on how they have to apply. And it's all, um, it all follows mass regulation, um, mass law and also the E R lease, the D H C D standard lease.
Do we need to vote to approve it?
You would, yeah.
Okay.
I think we should read it and then I, we just got it now.
Discussing.
Okay, so we'll put it on the agenda for next week, next month?
Okay, sure. Yeah.
Fair enough.
Sorry, so this is our package.
It was.
I didn't know it was a new, a new rental policy, so I just thought it was our.
Okay, so I put it on the agenda for next, next meeting. Um, now the wage match update, that, if I could just try to explain that. All that's saying is that the D H C D and the D O R have worked out a way to link their databases to make it easier, more effective, more, um, um, less error-prone, uh, in, in the evaluation of tenant, um, approval.
Uh, to the advocate quote.
So, um, but we do need to vote to, uh, accept it.
Right, so it outlines the, it's a public housing notice and public housing notices are online, um, at D H C D and they're public. Um, so it's a public housing notice that outlines as, as John was just saying. Um, and then, uh, it's, it does talk about training too, that we have to ensure that the staff is trained. And I did want to just relay that there's only three people in the Amherst Housing Authority office that have access to wage match and that is myself, Mary Willian as Director of Public Housing and Erin Cassidy as Director of Lease Housing. There are no other persons. We've taken the updated training. Um, and then there is a part for you, John, to sign off that has been presented in that.
All right, let's see if we can get a vote and I'll be glad to sign it this morning. Um, is there a vote to, and by the way, it's a D H C D. We don't have much choice.
Exactly.
All right, so is there a motion to accept this?
I'm, well, you go ahead.
I'll make the vote.
There you go. I'll second.
All right, motion's been made. The second is any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor of accepting the D H C D's policy? Sixty-five percent.
Aye.
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 All right, unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
This right.
Does it need to be in, in the other panel?
Yeah, with the absence.
There you go. We're coming to the end.
Yeah.
I think that is the end. Uh, public, public comments? Sure.
Number one, we don't have, you, no agendas are handed out any longer than we requested these meetings. Everybody used to get an agenda. And I'm requesting now, Pam Freak, the agendas for the last three years that we've been taken over by, uh, Amherst Housing. We can have the agendas for the last, not, not the minutes, just the agendas. Also, I wanted to, um, about subsidies, I've been to many board meetings where they've talked about the, the board and that the housing authorities happened to wait months and months and months and months for subsidies to be paid to the housing authority. Six months, eight months. So today, when, when the board was chastised because there's, they were slower and not voting on things, we, then why would we told over and over again, this is not unusual for having to wait for hundreds of thousands of dollars? And it, and I, why was that going up? I have it in my notes. I had, I saw it on YouTube. So why is it that all of a sudden you're made to feel like you did something that it's not unusual for having to wait for D H C D to lay out this money? Also, as far as reasonable accommodations go, I mean, that was one of our new, um, policies that we enacted like maybe six months ago, a reasonable apartment. If somebody needs a reasonable accommodation, like for instance, handicapped bathroom or something like that, they put it in as a whole procedure board. Now what happened is, and I'm not actually named, somebody here who put in for reasonable accommodation, instead of getting that a reasonable accommodation, she was forced to move across the street. So in other words, at her expense, she had to move to another apartment, knowing whose handicapped elevation.
That's what you're supposed to say. Thank you for.
And it's been.
I know that.
And asked for change in apartments that needed reasonable accommodation, that did need reasonable accommodation. And so many people have moved around over the years. And then we see lately the people who are given the newer apartments are people that, you know, it's just, they can choose who the people are.
Yeah.
You can have your name on this for months and months and months and years. Why don't you get another apartment and you're not given one? And then somebody can be in here for three years when you're here for twenty and we're just given the apartment. As far as reasonable accommodation goes, I'd like to have Pam and Mary answer this question. Why wasn't people's apartments made into a handicapped accessible apartment? Why did a person have to move across the way to get these handicapped things that are rightfully theirs? And that's something I want to bring up at the next meeting. I want to have added to the agenda. Also, I brought this board because living here twenty years and asking the same questions over and over and never getting any answers or given these half-assed answers. I thought if we get one of these giant boards, just a replica, where we'd have questions, we can, we can ask one of these questions at every meeting. Get to the bottom of these questions and then weight them off our list. You know, for instance, like the sixty-five dollar lockout fee. We went from a zero lockout fee to a sixty-five dollar lockout fee.
Oh, oh.
So.
Grace was locked out.
So what I wanted to say is how do we go in a low-income housing authority from a zero to a sixty-five dollar lockout fee? And then when I ask questions about it is where does this money go? And does everybody actually pay this lockout fee or is it like how this place wants? You might pay one, you might pay one, but I don't pay the sixty-five dollar lockout fee. Because there's never been a lot of fairness here as far as, you know, who gets the lockout fee and who doesn't. So when we ask questions about a lockout fee, we want to know where does this sixty-five dollars go to? Is everybody who has this sixty-five dollars, is charged sixty-five dollars when they get locked out? We never have.
How many minutes does she get?
Just a minute, please.
Three minutes.
Don't.
If you interrupt, you know, I'll have more time. Thank you.
All right, Sue, wrap it up, please.
Anyway, I thought it would be a great idea if the Hadley Housing Authority, if that's in one of these boards, you know, the ones on a solo horse, we can start making lists and get some answers to some of our questions. Because so many times we call, we write, we text, we get no answers.
Okay, thank you.
So that's one of those things.
Thank you for your comments.
I heard you telling her what to say and what not to say.
And why don't you let her be our member telling the tenant what not to say?
Wait a minute.
Why don't you let her cut me off? She decides to cut me off.
But she's telling her.
No, I, 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 the board, if you look on the agenda, which should be available to you, it's online. You can get it here. I'm sure the office will give you a copy of the agenda. It says that public comments are acceptable, but that the board will take the comments under advisement.
I'm not asking for any comment. I'm just asking for why, who decides what the amount of time somebody has. And for her to say that I'm too long, I mean.
The chairman. I didn't pay any attention to him.
Right.
Okay.
One more thing, when you brought up, I, like, when you brought up today, when Reese brought up the, uh.
Come on, John, that's your friend.
When Reese brought up the, uh, the going around door to door with this, um, survey, she, what I brought up before at a meeting is she didn't go to everybody's door. Also, she told people that if we didn't stay with.
All right, all right.
Lose our services.
That's land rush.
You did say it happened. I'll take it.
Don't worry.
So anyway.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other comments? Yes?
Please, can we get to this lockout fee? And what Reese was living to me is, don't say names. So I'm not going to say names. I'm going to tell you the policy. And so everybody here knows the policy, okay? You get locked out once in a year. You don't get charged a sixty-five dollars. You get locked out twice in a month, they're going to say now we need a lockbox. Now you need to secure your key another way because when it happens on a Sunday, they have to pay somebody time and a half. If it's during the week, three hours mandatory, they get paid for it. So what I'm saying is there is policy in there and nobody here who's been locked out has been charged. They haven't. So to go ahead and jump and say we're getting charged to long.
I didn't say that. I said, I just said, we don't know. We.
All right.
Back in.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Tracy, Tracy, Tracy.
That's the policy, folks.
Okay.
Nobody's getting.
Well, as I've handed out to the board and you guys are welcome to a copy, one of the great things that Hatfield does is it gives all the tenants a handbook. Hatfield.
I know. We have, we have a hint.
Well, would that address some of your comments? Tracy?
Sure. We know.
Okay.
The work has something though is that you have some tenants who just go ahead and get one bit of information and add to it. Without research, we have very.
Stop. Before the information.
Thank you for your comment.
I would like to address that I was with my neighbor last summer, sitting outside when she got locked out. When I called the office, the number that's on there, and lockouts are considered an emergency. We do have a maintenance on our, on during the week, during the weekend. So not in a. However, what I was told was that all the locks, all the locks, there's a ninety-year-old woman locked out of her apartment. Low income, very wealthy woman. Locked out and they're telling me sixty-five dollar lockout fee from the, the, um, lock, the, um,
Okay.
Lockout company. This is not true what you just heard.
Okay.
They're in for sixty-five dollar lockout.
Okay, the, the issue is not board stuff. That is executive director's stuff. You guys work it out. It's not, don't bring it to the board. Okay?
True, thank you.
It's a policy. If it's a policy, you guys have to say.
Okay, no, it doesn't, not, it has to go through the grievance process.
For Bateson, you just signed one and without the policies do go to the board.
Don't bring it to the board directing. Okay? And thank you for your comments. Any, any further public comment?
You know what? This is our home. Most of us are going to die.
Okay, let's.
So.
Thank you. Good for you. Thank you. Yes.
I'd like to be.
Please.
Okay. When I came into this meeting today, and I mentioned to you, and it was a false apology. When I came into this meeting today, I was, uh, there was one gentleman sitting here. I don't know his name. It's not important, his name. When I came into the. When I came into this meeting today, he was very hostile. And he said, what are you doing here? And, um, um, I'm an advocate and I have the right to speak. I am a. I'm an advocate here.
Stop it.
And I have the right to speak. So when I came in here, he was very, very angry. What he, and I had to immediately, I was on defense. And, uh, Reese, you were, uh, why are you?
That, I am not going to respond. If you have a complaint, please take it to the executive director. It's inappropriate. Or you could come to me personally, but this is not what public comment section, you're bringing up. She's bringing up a tenant who cannot defend themselves.
Come on, John.
All right.
I need those.
You're letting her go, woman. I am sorry, Heather.
Thank you for your comments. Well, you're going to have to bring the issue to the executive director, please.
That it's wonderful that new people are coming to meetings. You're welcome as an advocate, all new people that are coming to meetings. I want to bring up this thing about the, uh, survey that was taken. I would like to make a comment on the survey.
Which survey?
Survey that Reese.
No?
No. What do you mean, no?
I did that as a tenant. It is not a board matter.
I would just like to say. What to do.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, um, I, I think, I.
I cannot speak, John.
John, let her talk. Just a second.
Just a minute, just, just a minute. In, in briefly, what's the issue?
The issue is, is that when this survey was taken, I believe that the tenants were intimidated.
Okay.
Because they were told information.
Okay, but the, the tenants, the, the tenants did not complain, as far as I know.
Yes, we did complain. We complained.
Who did complain to?
We complained at a meeting.
Well, that's not the right way to do it.
Well, we did that.
File a grievance with the.
One more comment. I have, but I need one more comment.
One more comment, that's it.
I think that the newsletter, where people are not allowed to have the freedom of negative thought should be abolished. And the reason I think that is this community code of conduct. If you have nothing to say, don't say nothing at all. I think that that really goes against civil liberties. Something goes against.
If you're talking to me, her talk, and Bernie, this is back to you, all, every single.
Yes, I'm being, I, I am trying to enforce.
Well, she's playing, she's playing, you're not playing.
No, I'm the chairman, and I am saying that that is not board business. We have a procedure. Tracy is right. We have a procedure and you've got to follow the procedure. Okay? Otherwise, it isn't going to work. And I. So I am shutting her down because it's not board business.
But all of our stuff wasn't board business either.
All right, well, that's my judgment.
Show.
We need a next meeting.
And then they'll start complaining.
Okay, so we need to fix the next meeting date.
John, I want to say one more thing. I'd like to play, I know it sounded right, but I'd like to play with one. I can't even seem to finish one sentence.
But finish one sentence.
We have to play with one set of rules, because if one tenant is allowed to be about something.
Okay. Okay, all right. Now, the next meeting date is what?
I, I, I move that we make the next meeting date the last Tuesday in April.
What's the date, please?
The 25th at 11 o'clock. Do I hear a second?
Is there a second? I'll do a second. There's a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. All right. And the meeting is adjourned.